Good evening. This board meeting of the Board of Education for September 6th is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meetings tab. Meeting is being livestreamed on PPS TV Services website on Channel 28, and it will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. Director Green will be absent for tonight's meeting, and Director Constan may be joining us virtually for a little while, but wasn't 100% sure she could make it. Before we get started, I wanted to share just a few reminders. We ask that all members of the public attending the meeting tonight treat each other, staff, and the board with respect, and please do not interfere with the ability of the board to conduct its business. Those wishing to deploy placards, signs, or banners should remain in the auditorium foyer behind the seating area, and please don't block any attendees' view of the proceedings. Also, please keep the walkways and aisles clear, and in general, we would just appreciate it if you could be mindful of others in the room and the words you use, and be aware of who's watching, including our community's children. Moving on to our consent agenda, the board will now vote on the consent agenda. Board members, if there are any items you'd like to pull for discussion, we'll set those aside for discussion and vote at the end of the meeting. Ms. Bradshaw, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
No.
Great. Board members, are there any items you would like to pull from the consent agenda for discussion or questions? Great. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Great. Director DePass moves. Director Holland seconds. Any further board discussion? Great.
I have an issue related to contract, but I'm gonna just follow up.
Perfect. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
Great. The board will now vote on Resolution 6568 through 6572. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Student Representative McMahan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Dinner time got cut out.
Are there any abstentions? Great. The consent agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero with Student Representative McMahan voting yes. We are now going to turn to student and public comment, and let me just quickly review our guidelines for public comment. First, thank you for taking your time to attend the meeting tonight and providing your comments. It really informs and improves our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, or concerns, and our responsibility as a board is to actively listen. Our board office may follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony, and we request that complaints about individual employees be directed to the superintendent's office as a personal matter. If you have any additional materials or items that you'd like to provide to the board or superintendent, please email them to publiccomment@pps.net. Again, it's publiccomment@pps.net. When you begin your comment, please clearly state your name and spell your last name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak, and you'll hear a sound after three minutes, at which point we would appreciate it if you could quickly wrap up and conclude your comments. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have anyone signed up for student or public comment?
We do. I'll start with Ray Leary.
Welcome. I know Mr. Leary is Commissioner Leary, but welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair. Board members, Superintendent. Before I start, I want to express my gratitude. In the busiest week of the year, no doubt, the superintendent took time to meet with us, to talk with us, to hear us out, and given the demands that I know was on his office in that first week, we were gratified that he made the time to talk with us. In regards to that conversation, we wanted to make clear that we, as a community, are in a serious public health crisis, and as centers around, our concern centers around what we consider, and your data suggests, as the most vulnerable population within the Portland Public Schools cohort, and that is black, 7th grade boys. If we were to examine the misery index, you would see that they are the leaders in lost instructional time, in disciplinary engagement, attendance, not to mention, not to mention, disciplinary issues. In addition to that, we know that we live in a community where gun violence permeates every aspect of our community, and unless we find a way to capture the hearts and the attentions of these young black men in their younger years, we will be chasing this demon throughout high school and beyond. And there are many partners out there with the capacity and the capability of really putting a foot and a fingerprint on this issue, and I don't think we've taken the time to maximize on those resources. I don't think we've taken the time to truly empower those partners, especially those powers who look just like, those providers who look just like our students. So toward that end, the IM Academy has tried to position itself to begin to engage the middle school students, and we got our first test run in the enrichment program this summer. We purposely recruited incoming freshmen from George Middle School and from Kellogg Middle School to begin to provide them with a platform for entree into high school where they would not be a stranger, where they would have cohorts and friends, and they would have resources waiting for them there. And it pained our hearts not to be in that hall on the first day of school, because I know they were expecting us. We had made promises that we would be there. But again, we're working out a dynamic and possibilities for being able to expand that opportunity, and I would urge you as a board to look deep into the challenges that face middle school black young men and see, in this crisis, the opportunity it also presents. There's no place in the state of Oregon that has a more captive audience of black boys than Portland Public Schools. If we are going to put a dent in this public safety issue, why don't we be the leaders in that? Why don't we, PPS, decide that we're gonna mitigate, we're going to minimize, we're gonna put a halt to gang violence even being an option for young men, because we're going to allow them the partnerships necessary to feel secure in their future, to feel secure in their schools, and to thrive in a very, very tough environment? If there was ever a board who could understand this dynamic, I have had the pleasure of introducing my thoughts to you today. I thank you. I appreciate your time. Again, Superintendent, I appreciate your time, and I look forward to your support in making sure we provide critical, comprehensive services to young, middle school, black boys. Thank you. Hold on. Mr. Leary. Mr. Leary. Sir, I have one question. One question. Sir?
I heard about the program. I researched the program, and I think it's a great, a great thing that you're doing. What is the capacity to expand that into other middle schools like Tubman?
Well, we had made entrees, because we heard from Lentz, we heard from Kellogg, we heard from Roseway Heights, we heard from George, we heard from all of these schools asking for these services because they have 7th grade boys as a part of their population. There are practitioners out there, Gary, enough to cover the landscape. If Tubman was a priority, the IM Academy will look very hard at delivering those services there. We know that our young men need males who look like them to provide services that they can trust. So if there's a chance for expansion beyond the middle schools that we would like to serve, you will get nothing but a warm response from us, because we're serious about putting dent in this problem. We buried too many.
What would you need to do that?
We would need the support of this board, the budgetary support of RESJ, and the support of the staff and the administration. I have letters here from every single school that we've talked about, asking for that support. I'll be happy to leave that with you, but it's not rocket science. They're asking for the support. They want the support. My thought is this: if we have the resources, and I know we do, then why don't we aim them at our most vulnerable, our most critical issue? No one wants to get around to following the money. It might just tell the truth.
I wanted to follow up with that. I appreciate your testimony, and Mr. Leary would love to just hear a success from this, from this summer.
Well...
Just one. It doesn't have to be all of them, but I've also kind of checked up on your, on the IM Academy by asking community members and parents...
I had a brochure of letters. They're handwritten, and I could glean from those and share with you, but there was one in particular. It was a young lady. Her name was Kennedy. And Kennedy showed up halfway through the program, but once she got there, she embraced it full throttle, and she wrote a letter that characterized the advantage she now has from having met other people who will be going to Roosevelt, who she shared fun times with and academic exercises with, to the point to where friendships were made, first-name basis. And we've heard back from parents. Just yesterday, we had a pair of twins, Joshua and Jason. We bumped into their mom at the grocery store. We went in for a small item. Half hour later, we're still talking about Jason and Joshua and the summer they had, and mom was thrilled. And we've had those kinds of moments throughout the summer, Michelle. The critical point is this: we have a bevy of testimonials, but nothing beats the fact that when a kid comes back for service, they have given you the highest compliment available to them. They'll come once. If they don't disappear and they come back, they have told you. They're coming back for something that you've got, and it's good for them. So we're thrilled by the possibility, and we have countless testimonials and stories about wonderful things, and we have some tragedies as well. We had a couple of young men who participated in our summer program at Franklin. On a Thursday, week was over. Friday, they were both in the hospital, having been shot, and they sat in our classroom this summer. That's why we say to you, we're not talking about something that is a data point. We're not talking about a data point. We're talking about lives. We're talking about families and the ripple effects that trap a community, that puts staff in fear, and makes the buildings questionably unsafe. So we're talking about a way to get at a whole host of problems just by serving our most needed community.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I just wanted to mention, too, that Director Green is, he wanted to make sure I mentioned that he was in full support of the IM Academy. I think he had full transparency. I think he said he had worked there or had some stuff there, but he really believes in the program, and so I just, I told him I would make sure that that got out here. Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments.
Thank you. Great.
Ms. Bradshaw?
Greg Myers.
Welcome. Good evening.
I tell you, it never fails, every time I speak here, I'm always following a hard act to beat. That was very eloquent. My name is Greg Myers, M-E-Y-E-R-S. I'm head custodian for the Portland Public Schools, and I'm here tonight to talk to the board about COVID leave. I have a pre-prepared statement I'm just gonna read for you, so here, let's let it rip. Excuse me. "Our students and staff need safe and healthy schools so we can accomplish our mission. When COVID hit, our schools closed to in-person learning until we could figure out how to provide a healthy learning environment during a global pandemic. When we returned to in-person instruction, PPS adopted a layered approach to COVID safety, which included social distancing, mandatory vaccines for all the staff, and masks for the staff and the students. PPS also allowed all staff who had COVID to use quarantine leave. We still had problems, including schools that had to close due to outbreaks, but at least the staff and the students knew PPS was making a good faith effort. This summer, PPS stopped letting staff who have COVID use quarantine leave. The short-sighted policy change puts our community at risk. It also undermines the morale of your staff. We've been putting our lives on the line every day for two years. We've been speaking at the board meetings about this issue for the last three months, and the solution that PPS offers is for the staff who have COVID to exhaust all of their sick leave, all of their vacation time, and all of the other various leaves that the different departments are given before they can access COVID leave. I don't know how you guys would feel, but feel like you're at the end of the rope at that point if you've exhausted everything before you even have a chance for quarantine. We need PPS to provide COVID leave for all staff who need to stay home to avoid spreading COVID. I mean, I just saw today, we've got a new booster that's coming out for the next variant. We're heading into fall. It's not going away. It's going to come back. So we know that the parents and the students' voices are often necessary for us to make a change. We will use the upcoming opportunities at the open houses to educate and engage parents and students, and we will continue to escalate until we get a real solution that ensures our schools are as safe and healthy as possible. And one thing on our, just a note that's not on here, I'm a head custodian. I have a staff of custodians that work under me. Most of the custodians that I have working for me have already, before July 1st, when the, when our, that's when our leave and everything replenishes. Most of the people that work for me had already burned through all of their sick leave, all of their personal leave, all of their family illness time, and got to the point where I had one person who had had COVID three times. He was out a week, a week, a week, until finally he was on unpaid. So he chose not to get paid versus coming to work with still showing symptoms of COVID. So there is a reality. It does put people in a position to have to make a decision if I'm going to get paid and go to work, or if I'm gonna stay home and try and protect the safety of others and go without pay. So it is a real-world issue still for us, and we just wanted to make you guys aware of it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Ms. Bradshaw?
That concludes who we have signed up for public comment.
Thank you again for everyone's comments tonight. Moving on, I believe we are joined by our Portland Association of Teachers, and I believe Vice President Dixon is here to say a few words to us tonight. Welcome.
Good evening, directors, superintendent, and student representative. Happy to be here. It was a very exciting past week. I want to say thank you to all of our educators on the ground, and our families and students. Welcome back. I want to start off with some kudos. So I want to thank PPS for rescinding the $20 tech charge that families were going to have to pay to continue using the one-to-one Chromebooks. I know $20 doesn't seem like a lot, but if it is, it is, you know? So the families with multiple children that really were impacted by this, I think this was a huge win for them and really made a difference, so thank you for listening and following through on that. Also, in the spirit of collaboration, community, and transparency, I have some wonderings and concerns I'd like to communicate on behalf of PAT, mostly focused on the heat this past week and safe learning and working conditions, as well as some professional development concerns. So to launch into the heat and working conditions, I'm sure it's not a secret. It was hot the past week. We want to focus on how this is important for the board and our climate committee, because our children deserve adequate learning conditions. Our working conditions are children's learning conditions. So educators, staff, and students have entered our 90-plus schools at PPS to start the school year this past week and faced temperatures of 90 degrees at most schools. We received reports of students and staff having heat-related illnesses this past week, including a student throwing up until they passed out and having a serious medical situation. So upon hearing our members' concerns around the heat, we deployed thermometers to each school and educated members on the Oregon OSHA guidelines around heat illness mitigation. So we asked our union representatives to do two things. One, document the temperature in the excessively hot rooms at their sites, and two, email their administrators to ask for a heat illness prevention plan, which is a requirement listed in OSHA in the documents I mentioned, for when the heat index reached over 90 degrees. As PAT President, Angela also communicated with both the head of PPS Operations and the head of Labor Relations for PPS HR, and requested a heat illness prevention plan and PPS High Heat Practices Plan. The district's plan included the following: so students and staff were encouraged to stay well-hydrated, drink plenty of water, asking our already overwhelmed and overworked custodians to come in at 6:00 a.m. and open all the windows in the classrooms to try and get the hot air out, and the district shared an email with the community that stated each school would provide ample access to water. In addition to usual water fountains, PPS would make water coolers available when necessary, and encouraging folks to bring reusable water bottles. Unfortunately, despite the district's plan, educators came into buildings where windows were still closed at 7:30 when they arrived, and just for those who aren't familiar with the term, the heat index is what the temperature feels like to the human body when relative humidity is combined with the air temperature. So there's a few high temperatures and heat indices from across the district that I'm going to share here, and this is just a handful of many. So Lane Middle School had highs of 100 degrees with 55% humidity. That's 124-degree heat index. Oakley Green Middle School, highs of 90 degrees with 70% humidity. That's 106-heat index. Ida B. Wells, which I visited this week, had highs over 95 degrees and humidity hitting about 40%, which puts them at about 99 degrees on the heat index. Hosford Middle School, 93 degrees. Scott Elementary School, 95 degrees. Sowood, highs of 90 degrees with 49% humidity. Sunnyside Elementary, 91 degrees. Vernon, 92, and Grouse, 92 degrees. This is just a handful. Like, when I said most, I really meant most schools. We got some pictures of literally temperatures of over 110 degrees in these buildings, and we also had the opportunity, Angela and I, to visit a handful of schools: Cleveland, Scott, Saban, Perry Center, and I can say the only school that was comfortable was Perry Center, because it's located in a medical facility, and so Trillium is responsible for that versus PPS schools. So there was air condition, air conditioning there for students. I'm just bringing this to your attention, because I know there have been complaints, concerns from family and community about the condition of our buildings for a long time, and as we know, climate change is not going away. It's a priority for our students and our families, and we want to make sure that we're doing everything to support a path forward. Other things I want to touch on is the COVID agreement, like our labor partner, Greg, was talking about earlier. We have a labor coalition for PPS, which is made up of PAT, the District Council of Unions, Portland Federation of School Professionals, and ATU, and the SEIU. So we requested a continuation of the MOA, the agreement that we had, into the following year. As y'all probably know, unfortunately, we received a response to our request after the expiration of the MOA, as Greg mentioned. So this forced our members, along with other coalition members, to take unpaid time or use their sick time to stay home after June 30th if they were working over the summer. For those who need the income, this is an undue hardship. Folks use their sick time not only for themselves, but to care for their family members as well. I'm sure many folks in this room have had to take days off to pick up a sick kid. It's part of what we do as parents, right? Or to make a doctor's appointment that cannot be rescheduled. When staff are trying to hold on to the few days they have, they should not have to choose between pay and keeping their community safe from the spread of COVID, especially within our school system. So best-case scenario there is that they get to take the COVID leave before their other leaves, as it was previously. We're not asking for quarantine for exposure, but really just for if you have COVID, you get to stay home, you have five days' leave, and our labor partners really need that as well. Lastly, I just want to touch on PPS attempting to increase our workdays. So we get paid in PAT as members 192 days, or 202 days, depending on which contract you have. So the days added to the calendar for PD, for CSI, and TSI schools were done on non-workdays, and we've been in communication with PPS about this, I think, since spring, kind of back and forth. So they now, the educators in those schools now have 195 days due to this change. So unless you work at a CSI or a TSI school, September 23rd, October 14th, and February 17th are non-workdays. For non, these are non-student days, non-teacher workdays. They're non-workdays according to our contract. So what I'm saying here is we can't just break our contract because we're doing it for the kids, right? We're all doing it for the kids, because we love the children, but we also need to be paid, and we need to be paid fairly according to our contract. So if you review tests or contact families, if you go in and plan on your, in your classroom on these days, you won't be paid. That's not in our contract. We believe the district should be providing professional development with our 192 or 202-day work year, not adding days arbitrarily without bargaining that with PAT. That's also in our contract, and we want professional development. I want to be clear about that. We're not saying that we don't need it. We want it during our workdays of our work year. We used to take a late opening or early dismissal every month to train staff using courageous conversations around race. I know the district can and does prioritize professional development during the school year when it wants to, so we're just asking for these days to be worked into the calendar and prioritized like other professional development has been in the past. Please remember that when we come to this body and email with PPS staff as PAT, we're doing this to advocate for our students. So we already have a staffing shortage, and we need to make PPS a place where folks want to work and where kids can learn and be supported. I look forward to collaborating with PPS this year to find solutions that center students and keep employees in the district. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next up, Student Representative McMahan.
Hello, everyone. So before I begin, I'd just like to thank the previous speakers and Greg. I don't know if you remember, but I went to Sowood Middle School, and you were head custodian there, and I just remember you so well. And I think that just goes to show I remember you and how much of an impact these staff make, even if they're not potentially face-to-face with students all the time, but the work that you all do in schools is really important, and I want you to know that I do remember. And students do really feel the impact of the work you guys do. Okay, so to begin my remarks, good evening, everyone. I would first like to say happy first week of school. It's a very exciting time for all of us. As a senior, I'm saying little less exciting and a bit more stressful, but I'm feeling pretty good, and I want to start with some celebrations as well. So Danny Cage is a student at Grant High School, currently a senior, and he is our representative on the district student council, and he had some pretty amazing and exciting things happen to him within the last couple of weeks. And so the first is Danny was selected for the, I'm gonna try to say this right, National Association of Secretaries of State for the Medallion Award, and he got to go down to Salem and receive that award, and it's all about the work that he does in his community, which, for those of you that know him or have heard of him, it is a lot. And he has been so dedicated not only to district student council, to his role last year on the policy committee, but also to going to those community events and really putting in the work to show people that he is there to represent them and to be part of that everyday conversation. And then also, he's a big, got a lot of accomplishments here, he also was appointed to the Environmental Justice Council at the state level to continue his work, which he also does with PPS on environmental justice. And so I want to say, Danny, I'll probably clip this and send it to you from the YouTube video, I love working with you. What you do is amazing. You lead us, you help us. You lead us, you help us, and I'm so proud to stand beside you. I think so many times, students have these responsibilities that are overlooked. We have to do school, we have to take part in family life. We have to, you know, try to fulfill that idea that high school is the best time of your life, which in itself is a big constraint and concern. And I definitely feel that. So I applaud you, I congratulate you. Thank you for putting this work above everything else. And thank you for continuing to fight, even when times get rough and even when people don't always recognize the work that you do. So let's have a round of applause for Danny. Okay, and then on the note of thanking and congratulating, I also want to say a big thank you to our educators and our custodial staff and all of our in-building staff members for continuing to bear the first week of school, even in this almost crisis, really, of both heat as well as obviously concerns around contracts and pay. I want to say, and you really stated it perfectly, that the concerns about the heat have really been mirrored by my peers. I go to Cleveland High School, and I have found that it is hot, and it does really make an impact into the conditions for students. And especially when we're trying to set the tone for support and how do we make this year better than the last? How do we push forward and make students sort of the center of our decision-making? I really just want to push forward this idea that when we hear concerns from students, from families, from teachers, we really do need to listen to them. And so I definitely look to this board, and I'm excited to work along with you to see, as we continue to see the forecasts and these temperatures being high, how do we, as the district, help to facilitate solutions? And how do we make sure that we're really there for our students and our staff? Thank you, and happy second week and good luck.
Great. Thank you, Student Representative. Next up, we've got Board Committee and Conference Reports. I don't think we'll have a lot tonight, but I did want to let folks know that board assignments have gone out. I know that you all are working to get your committee meeting scheduled and agendas up and running. This is something we're going to be talking about at the retreat on September 17th as well. I do want to very briefly report back. Both Director DePass, I'm going to ask you to report back on School Board Partners' visit, and I'll report back on the OSBA conference. When we travel, we do like to just report back on some of the key takeaways from those things. So I was able to attend the Oregon School Board Association Conference in June. I think it was June, yeah, it was late June. And just a couple of key highlights. There was a keynote right at the very beginning about engaging families. And what was really interesting for me was that, obviously, engaging families is really important. It's, you know, it's a key thing that districts do, with the keynote speaker, whose name I'm blanking on. But he was from Florida, and one of the things that he really talked about was, and using evidence, about how districts that do a better job at student and family engagement actually have higher student achievement. And that makes sense when you think about it, but to actually see the hard data around the impact it has, it was really, I mean, it's really compelling. And to sort of hear about how important it is to have it integrated in everything we do, and not just because it's the right thing to do, but it actually improves student achievement in the districts that do it well. And so I went in sort of a little bit skeptical about the data and came out really converted in terms of that. And then I went to sessions about board leadership and sort of the need for board operating agreements. That's something we're going to talk about at the retreat as well. And some other key things about just hopefully having the best school district we can have this year. So with that, Director DePass, any words of wisdom from School Board Partners?
Yes, oh, my gosh, that's up really high. In, I believe, July, I attended a convening of School Board Partners, which is a nonprofit that's dedicated, whose mission is to fundamentally change experiences for kids of color in the U.S. The fellows are mostly black and brown, so very diverse and from diverse urban districts, like Portland, Atlanta, Chicago, a couple of districts in Tennessee, several in Atlanta, Washington DC, et cetera. We had, it was a day and a half convening, so it was really quick and held in Denver. One of the takeaways I had was we'd heard some criticism about our curriculum adoption late in the year, this year, this spring. And so I went to a session on curriculum, and the curriculum that we chose was rated like four-star, green four-stars, very highly rated by this organization, not just School Board Partners, but through a partnership, a coalition of School Board members and other educational leaders that are focused on, deeply focused on improving outcomes for kids of color. So I was really excited to learn that. I haven't circled back with them. I know I got some teachers and educators that reached out to me that were very concerned about that curriculum. And I was comforted to know that it was the highest rated of, I think, seven different curriculums that we looked at. Or that School Board Partners looked at. So I wanted to get that out there. In terms of a committee report, I don't have one, but I'll be chairing the audit committee. I'm really excited about that. I believe we're going to be meeting four times this year, so it's not going to be a very aggressive meeting schedule. But also, just wanted to say to people that are watching, welcome back to school. It's a really exciting time. I think at some point, I want to, definitely want to talk about the heat in our buildings. At some point, the city of Portland is currently working on a policy that will require commercial buildings to have cooling. So it seems like an urgent issue this week because it's really hot. It is getting hotter. And at some point, we won't have a choice. It's just a human right at some point. So it's one of those conditions where it's getting hotter, and we haven't prepared for it yet. But there's quite a bit of action happening at the city level for buildings such as ours, commercial buildings in particular. So thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm assuming there are no other committee reports? Great, I mean, just assigned them. Superintendent Guerrero, I think we're going to move on to a report about back to school, and I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, good evening, Directors and Student Representative McMahon. Just get the deck up here for a moment. Appreciate the opportunity to provide a little bit of a follow-up on how we're doing these first number of days. All right, well, today, as you know, represented the first full day of whole-class kindergarten. So senior leadership was out and about again, greeting our newest students and families. I myself started off my morning at James John Elementary School. Thank you for joining me, Director DePass, where I had the opportunity, we had the opportunity, to welcome and meet our newest, youngest scholars and their families to what will be the start of, we hope, a thirteen-year educational journey here at PPS, consistent with reports from other staff that was out greeting new kindergarteners. Families didn't seem too nervous. They, in many cases, stayed beyond the student drop-off to mingle, get to know one another. I want to thank our local PTAs and parent leaders who made coffee available and provided an opportunity for our families to continue getting to know each other. I also stayed on to visit classrooms after the meet-and-greet at James John. I observed students eager to learn, to meet their new teachers and friends. So I just want to say kudos to all of our kindergarten educators who welcomed their full classes today with a smile and a welcoming classroom environment. I know it takes time and effort to prepare those. I observed students drawing, coloring their desk name tags, listening to their teachers share their first read aloud books, some very interesting conversations about acuerdos comunitarios, or community agreements, which they started to do some brainstorming about, which included a whole host of ideas by our new kindergartners. Some of their suggestions included reminders like, "We should be kind", "Help a friend", "Listen attentively", "Try your best". So as you can see, our young students remind us of everything we need to know already at kindergarten. So I would like to call today's first day of school for kindergarten across PPS a huge success. And also, kudos to Chief Joseph, who I also spent the morning visiting their classrooms. So today's success, I think, mirrors the sentiment from last week, which I have to say has been among the smoothest in most folks' recent memory, as they shared. We've been up and running for a week now, and visits to and reports from. Our schools across the city and our leaders are describing a smooth and overall positive start to the school year. And I think that's due in large part because of our people. I'm grateful to all of our hard-working teachers, our support staff, our bus drivers, maintenance teams, and I know our central office staff. The majority of them were out at campuses these first number of days to lend a hand. And I want to acknowledge that many of our School Board members, who were able to be out and about and visible in our school communities, were present as well, so thank you for that. And thank you, everybody, for the positive social medias. It's good for our community to see we're connecting with our communities. And to our students, I want to, they deserve appreciation also for coming to school prepared to learn. It's amazing how, as we start up classes again, you can already see good learning habits and routines developing. It's refreshing, after all the pressures and dynamics of the last couple of years, to again observe the excitement of being back in school and to be squarely focused on student learning again. So I, like many district leaders, had the pleasure of getting around to many of our campuses. That includes visiting the New Nest, also known as Lincoln High School, to participate in the first-day freshman assembly, where I encourage students to have fun and to dive into all the rich extracurriculars that our schools offer. I also met with families on the first day at the Reunited Access Academy and welcomed them to their first day together as a united school community at their newly renovated schoolhouse. Overall, as I visited classrooms and schools all across PPS, it confirmed for me that our schools are places of learning, where students feel cared about, and our task is to cultivate and showcase our students' brilliance. And for our students in particular, who are making new transitions, whether it's starting kindergarten, sixth-grade middle school, or high school, we understand how important it is for our students to get started off on the right foot. So I'm glad that our educators and school communities were able to make a little extra time to welcome our new students, so making sure they feel supported and oriented to their new campuses. And I have to give a shout-out and take a moment to highlight our talented school leaders. They've worked tirelessly to make sure their schools were ready. They spent the summer interviewing and hiring staff, participating and investing in their own professional learning as well. Our principals and school administrators are tasked with leading their school community's continuous improvement efforts. And in PPS, our administrators maintain a very clear focus on achieving the educational equity that we have as an objective. They want every single child and every young adult to succeed, and they understand that our Black and Native students in particular require the extra attention and support so that opportunity gaps are eliminated. So for our school leaders out there, I appreciate your dedication and your continued focused efforts. And next up, I want to have Dr. Renard Adams provide the latest student enrollment numbers.
Good evening, Directors. I wanted to provide another brief enrollment update based on our current registrations. As of September 2nd, so that was last Friday, we've registered just over three thousand kindergarten students. As you're all aware, from the superintendent's remarks in your school visits, kindergarten started today. And so we expect to register and enroll additional kindergarten students over the next two weeks before the ten-day drop for kindergarten happens. We anticipate we'll reach our projected enrollment numbers for kindergarten this school year. At the middle-school grade band, we're seeing enrollment numbers that are slightly higher than our projection. You can see that in the last column. While elementary and high school enrollments are now below our projection for this year. So that's been a change since last we met. Those numbers have gone down a little bit. As has been previously shared, these enrollment numbers are preliminary. They'll continue to firm up as we reach the ten-day drop mark for students in all grades. As students either regularly attend, we mark them present, and we can count them in our enrollment, or they don't attend, don't show up, or parents unenroll them from our schools and transfer them to other schools. We know that our principals and our school teams and our teachers are working very hard to welcome students and families into this new school year, and we're so very grateful for their efforts in this regard. Finally, just wanted to put a shout-out to the staffing team. As is typical for this time of year, they are closely monitoring schools' enrollments to determine the extent and need for fall balancing as we approach those ten-day markers. And so we're closely looking at enrollments. We're looking at the entire system, all schools. So that way, we can know that we can understand class sizes and enrollment patterns across the district, not only where we have more active parent associations, but also where our parent associations might be a little bit more quiet and not email us as much. We want to also make sure we're taking care of them. With that, I'll turn it back to the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. And just like you've provided an enrollment update, I want to make sure and provide the board and our community a staffing update. So more positive news. As I mentioned, our school principals and central office teams have continued to make progress in the hiring and onboarding of new educators and school-based staff. As of today, we are only seven homeroom teacher vacancies short of being at a hundred percent of our elementary and K-5 classroom positions and K-8s being filled. Okay. And when it comes to core content classrooms at the secondary level, that means subjects of math, science, language arts, and social studies. We're looking pretty good there as well. So at a time when school systems, both locally and across the country, are truly struggling to recruit and hire educators, we're in a pretty enviable position right now. Now, overall, looking at all of our employee groups, we're just under about a hundred and thirty-five school-based instructional vacancies now. Many of these are classified support staff roles of a variety, for instance. But of these positions, about a quarter of them are already in the progress or in the process of being welcomed into a PPS school. So, and we're continuing to make some progress on our custodial and nutrition services front. We're making progress there as well. So if you want some specific numbers, we can provide those as well. But just the larger group is seventy-five vacancies for educational assistance. So we're still out there. If you know anyone and would love to support classroom learning, please see us. All right, Director Hollins, this next one's for you. We wanted to make sure and give you a little bit of a snapshot on our new and rehire demographics for, since July, just since July 1st. That's five hundred and thirty-four hires. Fifty percent of our new school admins are people of color. Wait for it. And even in senior leadership, we try to model that. Seventy-five percent of our new hires are people of color as well. So I wanted to make sure and include what our student demographic is, because I think it's important that we're, at a minimum, proportional and representative. Of course, it never hurts to have educators of color present across the school system. You see there that we're faring a little better in some of our labor partner groups. However, we're doing pretty well in our SEIU, you heard from earlier. They're almost at forty-nine percent, folks of color, who occupy those positions. Our PFSP folks at thirty-seven and a half percent as well. Again, these are our statistics for new hires, so this is just a snapshot tonight. You'll get, as we close up, more finalized staffing numbers across the system, and we can take a look at those. I also want to mention that almost half of our athletic coaches are folks of color as well. So you see the reference point with our students of color, but I did want to make sure and include this slide for you this evening. Okay, so before I close out this quick update, I also want to acknowledge that last week's heat wave was an obstacle to creating the truly joyful and comfortable learning environment. We'd all like to see our community, like communities around the globe, are encountering the realities of this climate crisis. We recognize that the majority of our buildings, given our modernization efforts have only started in recent years, are not yet entirely ready for the changing weather patterns. We hear and share our community's concerns and frustrations and know that with the realities of climate change, heat waves, and other abnormal climatic events during the school year, they're going to become more frequent, not less. So we know that the heat affects everyone differently, and that being impacted by heat is more than just uncomfortable. It's an issue of individual and systemic injustice and inequity. So community health and resilience is a top district priority and called out specifically as a pillar of our climate crisis response policy passed by this school board in March of this year. Our climate justice advisor, Kat Davis, will work this year with a cross-departmental team to establish a heat wave protocol in alignment with a climate crisis resilience plan as well. So as your superintendent, just want to assure you that we're working on a tangible solutions for this in the long term. It's a large-scale issue. And know that together, we can help both mitigate our impact on exacerbating climate crisis while also coordinating some adaptive measures so our schools are centers for community resilience. So we're excited about this work ahead, collaborating together, learning from each other as we tackle this important issue, and imagine together what it looks like to have an inspiring, joyful learning environment despite a changing climate. And that concludes my update for back to school this evening.
Great, thank you, Superintendent. Yeah, I just, I want to open it up for brief questions. We are running a little bit behind, but just see if there are any questions from the board around the information that we just heard.
Well, I don't have a question. I have appreciation. I appreciate the slide as far as disaggregating the data. I think for our community and our kids to see that. And, you know, when we always talk about, you know, kids doing better when they have people who look like them, I think that's very important. So I want to give appreciation out for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have to send the appreciation to everyone who's a hiring manager, whether you're a principal or a department head, and to our HR staffing team, who has to crunch these numbers manually. So we look forward to sharing some further numbers later this fall. I think we've mentioned before, what makes this challenging in particular is the candidate pool in Oregon isn't diverse. So, you know, we have to try a little harder.
And then we have to, a hard time keeping people when they get here as well. So, it's a, it's a rough environment.
That's another topic.
Not just here.
Well, I'll just, I'll add to the kudos, and I think that, you know, what we've done on staffing, this would be a good year in terms of hiring in a normal year, but given the national environment around hiring teachers, to be where we are in terms of really minimizing those vacancies is pretty exceptional. So congratulations to you and your team for doing that, and I think that's, yeah, it's a really monumental accomplishment. And the last thing I'll say, maybe for just future conversation, I know other board members have brought this up in the past, but looking at those enrollment numbers, you know, we're still hoping for some kindergarten kids, but we are down in a little bit of areas, and I think it's an interesting question about, and I believe we've asked this question, and your answer has been, you know, there's sort of some capacity issues, but, you know, what is possible to do in terms of outreach to those families, you know, finding out a little bit more? I think that can help with strategies in the future, but also, maybe there are some families we can find that, you know, we can actually bring back into the, into the schools.
Yeah, and just one more plug. I know I've been saying this to families everywhere I go as I visit campuses. We have 350 preschool slots, folks, so please give us a call. I know there was another tweet earlier. See our website. Just call any one of our offices, Head Start, preschool, you know, we've got seats. So if you're a three- or four-year-old out there, we'd love to start seeing you now.
Great, thank you. Next up is also an update on summer school, so I will turn it back to you, Superintendent.
We have a star-studded crew this evening, who are going to share a more comprehensive summary of our programming this past summer, which, as you know, had a few different elements to it. So, that's why you see this cross-departmental team here, who's going to share with you. And I'm going to give you the clicker.
Perfect, thank you. I think we're going to go through Zoom, maybe?
No, I think you guys get the clicker. Here we go.
All right.
The clicking's not going to, I'll be your clicker.
Okay. Good evening, Board President, members of the Board, Student Trustees, Superintendent Guerrero, and Portland Public School Partners. My name is Dr. Kimberly Armstrong, and I have the pleasure of serving as Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dana Naraberg, Senior Director of Academic Programs in the Office of Teaching and Learning.
Good evening. Jay Buno, Interim Chief of Student Support Services.
Hi, I'm Dani LaDanza, the RESJ advisor.
Great. Great, so I have the pleasure of bringing forth this item under the Board Goals and Priority Area while we work our screen and click on. I guess I'll just keep going. So, the Summer Acceleration Program, under the Board Goals, thinking of first, third grade goals, the focus was on nonfiction texts. And for fifth-grade math, we focused on fractions and decimals. And for eighth-grade readiness, we focused on nonfiction texts as well, as well as ratios. And for high school graduation, the goal was credit retrieval. And we were able to move some numbers from last year, 349 freshmen, to this, last summer, 615, so we're excited about that. And then the post-secondary focus for the Board, we were able to offer programs that included hands-on projects for STEAM, as well as enrichment programs that you'll hear about later. Okay, next slide. So I just want to go quickly over some data points, and I know it may be hard to see. It is a revised slide, was updated today. And so, really, this is just to show who attended. I have a data slide that shows K-8 enrollment by grade band, just so that you can see the distribution of students amongst those bands. Next slide. Oh, can't see that. Yeah, let's, yeah, let's, right, it's revised. So, let me speak to that. Yep. We need to zoom in. It's a little small on our side, too. Yeah. There we go. So, 2,493 for first through, first through fifth, and then sixth through eighth.
This is K-8.
Or, I'm sorry. Oh, K-8. K-8, 457, and 68, yeah, 581, sorry. What was the first, the first?
First one is K-5s.
K-5. Right? K-5, okay. Thank you. Next slide. Yes, and we're going to speak to some of that. So then, just really quickly, a snapshot of Portland's population by race and ethnicity for the academic year '21-'22. And then the next slide shows the population in the Summer Acceleration Academy by race and ethnicity. So you'll see similar numbers. Next slide. The average daily attendance, we thought that this was important to show, the average attendance of students across the sites, to show that it was a positive number. There were some dips, and those dips happened during the week of extreme heat, but for the most part, the programs maintained their enrollment. Next slide. We also have average daily attendance by race and ethnicity. You see the actual percentages at the bottom of the race or ethnicity category, but still showing the attendance disaggregated out. Next slide. And then the average daily attendance by program, so looking at students who are served through multiple programs and those unique numbers, that percentage, thank you. Then on the budget side, I just wanted to, next slide, show the preliminary budget. This was what was forecast for summer programming, just under $18 million, and through the different categories. Thank you. And then the next slide will show the funds that we received from the Oregon Department of Education, so just under $3 million for summer academic support. So students who were entering grades nine through 12. And then for summer enrichment and academic programs, so combined, it shows the allocation there as well. So the total, $8.3 million from the Oregon Department of Education. And so just a couple of things on the budget. Next slide, thank you. So we were able to make full use of the ODE K-8 summer funds. We also had additional funds, approximately $677,000 from Student Success Act, and those were funds that were designated for eight different, serving students from eight different schools across the hub sites, and then also $500,000 from ESAR. So just to note that the expenditures are not yet finalized, so we don't have a final budget report this evening, but we can say that any unused K-8 funds will return to ESAR. And I think what's significant about that is, for the forecasting and the budgeting process, the team had planned on a budget that was completely supported by ESAR, but through the funds from ODE, we were able to utilize those funds first. With that, I'd like to turn it over to our Senior Director of Academic Programs.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So, in terms of the different programs that we offered this summer, we identified and referred students in a myriad of ways. We had our school teams look at attendance. We had our school teams look at some diagnostic informative assessments, academic performance, how students were making progress towards their goals. Specifically for Summer Acceleration Academy, we used our mid-year MAP data and our mid-year DIBELS data, and provided guidance to school teams to look at other factors in addition to that data that told a more complete story. They know which siblings need to go, they know which students would eagerly participate, and which families would sign on. As well, we partnered for Summer Scholars. Part of why those numbers that Dr. Armstrong mentioned were so great for our first-year students, Summer Scholars has historically focused on our students closest to the finish line, our high school seniors. And we also know that if our students leave ninth grade on track, they're more likely to graduate on time. And so we worked with our ninth-grade success teams to identify first-year students in high school who would benefit from the program. That's, so that was a success there. We'll look in a few more slides at some of the numbers of the other programs that we served. If you could look at the next slide, please. Thank you. Go ahead. Did you?
Of the students who were invited to, or referred?
She didn't.
It's on, it's on. Thank you. Of the number of students who were identified and invited or referred, what percentage of them actually took us up on that? And, you know, was there any sort of learnings of, if there was a gap of ones, who were invited but didn't participate? Like, what, what did we learn about what we could do differently?
Right. We have not yet disaggregated that data, and we have some resources that will enable us to do so. So each school team for Summer Acceleration Academy was allocated a certain number of spots for this hub model, so all the schools came together at the 25 sites, and we allocated the hub, the spots, based on an equity model. So students, schools that needed, had more students needing the support and opportunity had more spaces. We invited school teams to identify three rounds of kits, knowing that some parents, plans would change, some families would say no, thank you. And so, in some schools, we went to all three rounds, other schools, we didn't, and we're prepared to dig a little bit more into that data, specifically finding out when parents decided not to enroll, when we could find out why they made that choice. So, stay tuned. We'll get that information to you. Last summer, as you all know, was our first summer of Summer Acceleration Academy, and we learned a lot. And we reached out to some of the best practices in summer programming nationally. One big change was growing the program from three to four weeks, enabling us to do more intensive academic support for our students. We added more planning time for our teachers, based on feedback from our teachers, and provided much more specific instructional guidance. So for our core curriculum, we used Ready Reading and Ready Math. We also used Foundations Ready to Rise for first and second grade, Rising First and Second Graders. It's a specific program intended for summer support that aligns to our high-quality instructional materials adoption. So our students, in the first few days, were using some of the same routines and rituals that they use in the classroom. We also enrolled our students earlier, and we used a centralized process, and we're hopeful to do that even earlier this year. We also began our hiring earlier, and we will definitely start earlier this year to get our staff in line. And one really exciting element that was a change from the previous year is, most of our site administrators, 20 of them in fact, are not current building administrators, but they're educators within our ranks who hold administrative licenses. So we partnered with HR to get that information. They might be TOSSAs, they might be classroom teachers. They pursued and invested in a credential, and yet had not taken the leap, so to speak, to lead. And so we recruited them and had a terrific time. Many of them are pursuing administrative roles within our system, and a couple also said that wasn't what they wanted to do. And that's a good way to learn, they still serve us beautifully, but they also learned that about their, the way that they want to lead within the system. And that also allowed our principals to have more of a chance to recharge, because the previous summer, many of our principals were our building leaders. We're also, in terms of longer-term data, we're part of a longitudinal study in partnership with NWBA, AIR, and the Calder Center to track the longer-term impact of participation in summer programming. Yes? What's AIR? I knew you were going to say that, as soon as the American Institutes of Research. Yes. And so it's a consortium, I think there's eight to 10 school systems nationally where they're tracking how our ESAR dollars are being used, and going to be able to provide us data back. So I think that that first, I know that that first MAP assessment we give in October, they'll be able to pull out and tease out which of our students participated. They'll be able to track who participated the summer before and see the impact and the longer-term benefits for our students. Next slide, please. So here's a summary, the next two slides are a summary, including numbers of all of the range of academic programs that we offered. So we had our early kindergarten transition program, serving 272 rising kindergartners from 19 sites. Most of those were in their home school. There were just a few where there was construction and they served at other campuses. So when those kindergartners walked in the door last week for their practice day, and then today, they were confident and knew their way around. There was one site I was at for the very first day, and there was a student who was like a koala bear on his mom, like, not like, I mean, I was an elementary principal for many years, like, would not let go. And the following week, I was there again, and he was like, "See ya," and just like the first in line. So it was just real evidence of the effectiveness. We served nearly 370, 3,700 students, rising first or eighth graders at our 25 hub sites, and that includes students from every single one of our elementary middle schools and K-8 schools, as well as many of the charter schools in our system. We had Summer Arts Academy, which I got to see with Director Lowry, the amazing end-of-program celebration. We served approximately 160 rising sixth through ninth graders, and there was an amazing celebration at the Newmark Theater, the culmination. Leap into ninth grade is a terrific credit-earning opportunity, where our ninth graders get to go in, earn a half a credit, and really get to know their campus in a three-week program. And it's just a great way for them to build friendships and relationships and feel confident in their new site. Summer Works provides amazing professional employment opportunities for our students. This summer, we were able to employ 306 of our high school students, including supporting two of our other programs. So they supported Summer Acceleration Academy, some future teachers we're hoping to recruit and nurture, and then also our partners, Portland Interscholastic League Math Trajectory Program. A number of their coaches also participated in Summer Works and earned CTE credit for an education course at PCC. Next slide, please. We also have Summer Scholars, serving 2,789 students across two sessions at five sites with an 89% passage rate. And that's no small feat for those students to take an entire high school course in three weeks. It's pretty amazing. We got to visit a couple of the sites and saw the students really engaged. The Math Trajectory Program that I mentioned served 133, 130 middle-school students and 34 Summer Works high school students at McDaniel and Roosevelt, and they had a ball, and just, and then that program has a lot of tradition, and a lot of students who participated in it came back as coaches this year, and they have a really solid set of educators who come back year after year. Our Indian Education Program served 75 students across a variety of programs. So there was a week-long first-through-fifth-grade camp. They provided scholarships to AMZI tutoring, and then the Cultural Connection canoe experience. And then our Migrant Education Program hosted a program at Vernon K-8, serving 62 students in their four-week program. Next slide, please. We've got a few photos, oh, excuse me, SUN, and then we'll get to some photos. So SUN is an amazing partner all year round, but particularly in the summer. And so we've got our five SUN partners, SEI, ERCO, Impact Northwest, Latino Network, and Portland Parks. And they offered enrichment programming in the afternoon at 33 sites and served 2,232 students. Some of that, most of that was in conjunction with Summer Acceleration. They also had some standalone programming. And at one of the sites, at Kelly, where the partner is Latino Network, Christina, the SUN site manager, has been there for a very long time, and I got to spend some time with her this summer. And she, there was a student who needed a little extra TLC and would often come to the SUN office for a little extra TLC during academic time, but was drawn to Legos. And then at one point in the summer, Christina was able to offer a Lego program in the afternoons, and that student was really engaged, and after that, participated more fully in the academics. So tending to that social-emotional need and that interest, and that high interest motivated that student to participate more fully in the academics. Next slide, please. Just here, a few snapshots of what was going on and the great learning that happened across our sites. That picture of the Summer Works sets at Reglar Elementary School, so that's a bilingual student, is one of our high school students who was able to support that bilingual classroom there. It was just a small smattering. There's, we served so many kids, it was so joyful. I think, next slide? I think that's it. I think I'm going to pass it to Jay, to Jay Buno. Thank you.
So, good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit about special education-specific programming that we provide over the summer, that was in addition to everything Dana just talked about. And I do have some information in here related to the numbers of students with IEPs that participated in all of those programs, but then also talk about the special education-specific programming. So, next slide, please. So, in special education, we like to use acronyms, so I'll talk a little bit about each one of these things individually. So, every year, we run an extended school year program, and typically, we serve between 100 and 150 students. And the focus of that program is for students who are impacted in their learning over extended learning breaks, or extended breaks in learning, and it takes longer than would be typical for students to recover. And so what we do is, we provide additional instruction for them over the course of the summer to help them maintain, maintain their learning. And so we had that program run this summer, in which, there was some uniqueness to it, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. and I'll talk a little bit more about that. And then, in addition to that, we provided what is called Special Education Recovery Services. And the reason I'm going to talk a little bit about that right now is because this is the first year of a two-year cycle where we will provide recovery services. They are specific services outlined in a student's IEP that are focused on impacts related to the pandemic. So, for students who struggled with or weren't able to engage with learning at the same rate that other students would have been due to things like remote learning or other issues that they may have experienced that would have been unique in the pandemic. So, we provided recovery services and co-located it with our Summer Acceleration Programming, with the Summer Scholars, and with all of the programs. Part of the focus in the way we did it was to ensure that students could access the acceleration program in addition to provide the specific individualized instruction that was determined in their IEP goals for recovery. And so, some of the ways that we ended up doing it in addition to that was intensive group tutoring, direct instruction, one-to-one instruction with a student and a teacher. We participated in Summer Scholars. We did vocational support and instruction. We had students in, using the YTP grant, access paid internships in the community to support goals related to employment vocational, independent living skills. And then also, in addition to that, provided behavior and mental health supports. As indicated, we had a number of students participate in Summer Acceleration and in our early kindergarten transition services. So, next slide, please. One of the things that we learned from last year was that students wanted to access multiple programs. And so, to enable students to engage with both ESY and Summer Acceleration, we went through a process of getting stakeholder input with families and students and staff members on adjusting the ESY schedule. Because what we had learned from the previous year is that when we ran ESY and Summer Acceleration at the same time, students couldn't participate in both. And so, this year, we did something unique that has not been done here before. And we had ESY start as soon as school got out, then Summer Acceleration occurred, and then ESY picked up for two more weeks at the beginning of August in an effort to make programming available to kids, and in addition to that, to take advantage of staff who wanted to participate in all of it. In addition, we wanted to make sure that our staff recruiting and having folks work during the summer was a specific focus for us. So, we started recruiting very early. In addition to that, established committees that included teachers, specialists, and administrators for planning for programming, as we knew that that level of support was important as we moved forward. So, next slide, please. So, overall, we served 1,200 students that have an IEP in our summer programming this year. That includes everything. Extended school year was 170 students, so we increased the number of students that participated. Usually, it's between 100, 150. We had 620 students that have a disability and participate in our K-8 Summer Acceleration. And then, in our recovery services, we were able to provide about 60 hours of additional instruction to students. And we had about another 500, 600 students participate across all of our programming. So, next slide.
Before you move slides?
Huh? Oh, it's her.
Just off our comment, I think the number increase is great. I'm glad to see so many students getting services. Because of the complexity of the special ed rules and all the different programming and what students and families can expect, I would think it'd be even better if there were some sort of, like, one pager explaining the different programs, because I think there was some misunderstanding about what sort of services might be offered. And I'm not, this isn't critical at all, but just like, so that people have, like, can know what to expect of like, this is like this, or this is different from the normal school year from this. Because I think it's quite complex. And as a layperson, to see all the layers, but to see the number of students increase is great.
No, I appreciate the comment. One of the pieces of moving forward that we wanted to do, and part of the feedback that we gathered from families, was to be more specific and explicit related to the different types of programming, because at the same time, things all came out at once. And so, anyway, we wanted to grow and be more intentional with that as we move forward also.
Be good students.
Yes. So, next slide. So, I talked about YTP services, which is Youth Transition Program Services. So, we had 24 students, 24 of our high schools age and in transition age students participating in summer internships, which was a significant increase from last year where I think we had around 10 students. So, we were able to expand that. And then, we had 857 students of all ability levels participate in our partners' programming, so the extended programming also. So, that was awesome. And this part, I can't emphasize enough, this is huge, because none of this would have happened without these folks. We had over 140 amazing PPS educators, special educators, who came to work during the summer and served and supported these students. Everybody stepped up. We had administrators in classrooms. We had paras working for us and teachers working for us. And so, I can't emphasize enough, because of the significant increase in numbers, that the folks stepping up and supporting our kids was just awesome and made all of this possible. So, with that, I'll hand it to Dana.
Good evening. So, I'm here to talk about the RESJ enrichment and safety work. And so, if we go to the next slide. One more. So, as you'll recall, in keeping with the emphasis on student success, this is our second summer that we launched our summer enrichment and safety programming to really complement all of the work of the summer academic and acceleration programs. Our programming goals are really based on two important pieces of research, as well as the context of our community. We wanted to make sure that we were doing everything we could to respond to safety. Research says that the best way for communities to contend with youth gun violence is to prevent it. And so, under your leadership, we made a really big investment in preventative programming, including employment for many of our youth, as well as really great programming that was offered all across the city and gave students and parents free programming. The other piece around safety is that communities that are more resilient to gun safety have a really strong set of nonprofit partners that support institutions and are engaged in this prevention work. And so, we wanted to make sure that we were complimenting the work of our PPS staff with our amazing, you know, embarrassment of riches and that we have so many great partners. The other piece of research that we know is that enrichment and extended learning does have a direct impact on student achievement, particularly for students of color. It gives our students a chance to explore in context, to be able to gain some agency around what they want to learn, and to give them opportunities to not only have fun, have some positive pro-social peer interactions, but also explore what they want to learn and potentially, one day, become. So, that being said, this summer, we were able to serve, pretty close to our goal, we were serving 53, 69 students in over 50 different programs that are run by our partners. If you'll recall, 47% of the 50 or so programs were culturally specific. Many of them were not only culturally specific, but also multiracial. We also spent 55% of our budget directed to those culturally specific organizations because of the work that we've been doing over the past four years about really trying to make sure that our partners are supporting the work of the district. We were able to be, we had programming in the 26 different hub sites, as well as seven off-campus programs. We were able to support 278 different student employees who have earned about $129,000 to date. Our contracts with our partners end September 1st, so we're still getting all the final information, but wanted to make sure that you knew that. We heard from parents, their feedback that their students were engaged. Many of them felt like this was a great transition for them to be in person with their students and to have that positive peer-to-peer interaction. Parents talked about the importance of culturally specific services. They love the options. And then, we heard from many of our partners, a consistent theme of students being able to step out of their comfort zone and try different things and have a pretty good time. So, thank you to student Representative McMahon, Director Brim Edwards, for coming out and seeing some of our programs and for all of your support. I'm going to turn it over to two partners. So, we had 50 partners. We selected two to tell you a little bit more about their summer, so I'm going to invite them up. The first is Mashari Tyson, who's the founder of Black Excellence. And the second is Daniel Gilfoyle, who's the Director of Student Programming at the Native American Youth and Family Center.
Next slide.
Oh, next slide.
Thank you. And good evening, Superintendent PPS and School Board members. I promise I'm smiling. Big smile under here.
Me too.
I'm Mashari Tyson, founder of Black Excellence Group. And really, it's an honor and a privilege to be able to share this evening, a snapshot of what the summer was like in our B Summer of Excellence. When we say B, Black Excellence, so if you hear me say B, it's our shorthand. We designed an enrichment program that centered our B students, their passions, talents, as well as connected them to vital supports necessary to thrive this summer. Our custom intake process allowed us to prioritize and really understand the needs of the most prioritized students that needed those supports during the summer, so that they could thrive. We called those just-right supports for the students and families. Our B family advocates served as case managers in order to make sure that our students could thrive, were safe, and joyful over the summer. We served 153 students, kinder through eighth grade. The representation across those students were Rosa Parks, Martha King, Markham, Bridal Mile, Jackson Middle School, and Oakley Green. Some of those were our youth employment interns, which was really fun to have this summer. Our layers of support were pretty complex. We took a customized approach, which is a big undertaking, and we felt really good about it, being able to really provide what the students needed. In hindsight, it's really complex with that many students. But it was a joy to be able to provide supports that made sense for our families, so customized camps and experiences. We had red-zone student tutoring, so students that weren't meeting benchmark for math or reading, we were able to provide tutoring for those students. We designed an early access to middle school program where we were able to hand off our rising sixth graders to middle school, so that those black students actually had a warm handoff to their new school. And we brought them in with their families, did an orientation, and just got them together as a cohort and brought in the existing older students to be able to provide that cohorting kind of experience for the students. We also did incentives for engagement, and were really able to customize what the families needed. Some of the highlights from the camps and experiences were swim, nature, tutoring, sports camp, soccer, basketball, robotics, gymnastics, you name it. We had students all over the city doing amazing things that they were passionate about, that they wouldn't otherwise have access to. You can go to the next slide. I'll keep talking for a second, but you can look at some fun pictures of our... Oh, maybe one more slide? Are there more photos, like a little snapshot? Oh, maybe not. Okay. Well, I'll pass it out afterwards, so you can see it. I'll pass it around. There were students that hadn't taken swimming ever, that were able to swim for the first time. We reserved blocks of swim classes that if you were a parent and you're trying to get swimming lessons for your child, are almost non-existent. And we were really proud to have a ton of our kids taking swim and doing things that they wouldn't have had access to. So, the ability to have collaborations with SUN and push in and provide Black Excellence Mini Camp was an amazing win, as well as being able to have a collaboration with Radio Cab. One of the big hurdles for our families is transportation, so we did a collaboration with Radio Cab and ensured that our students could make it to soccer camp or art camp every single week, even if it means picking up a family, coming back, and doing a relay in order to make sure that family got there. Another just huge win was being able to have a lifeline to groceries and fan distribution, and really just be able to have the privilege to have our finger on the pulse of what our families needed and be able to provide that support. So, we really want to say thank you to the PPS team and the RESJ team for just the thoughtful, proactive approach for asking the partners to be able to respond with what our families needed. It was really a joy, but an honor to be able to support our families. So, thank you.
And I also got the opportunity to actually visit Markham. I got to go and see the group of students at Black Excellence, and it was awesome, like, so great meeting with these kids and seeing them. And it's kind of crazy, like, the community building that you can create in such a short period of time with that many students. And on the day, we actually did this activity where you, it was like a heart on a piece of paper, and then you fill it in. And I actually have that hanging up in my room. So, it really was a great experience for me, and it was so amazing, and I absolutely adored the program. It was really cool.
Thank you for coming.
I still have the shirt, also.
Thank you. My name is Daniel Gilfoyle. I'm the Director of Youth and Education Services at the Native American Youth and Family Center. And I also want to echo the sentiments of my colleague here, appreciating the support for our programs. So, this summer, we had a variety of programs to serve our community from second grade through 12th grade. Some of that included our camp rise for middle school youth, Ninth Grade Counts Program for emerging ninth graders. We also had high school-age youth attend Southern Oregon University's Conaway Camp for Native American and Alaska Native youth to give them a college experience away from home, which was an amazing experience for many of the youth that attended. Some of those youth really came out of their shell. You know, a lot of our youth are uncomfortable being around non-Native people, people that don't look like them. And we are a very diverse community. I myself, I'm Seneca from the Allegheny Reservation in Western New York. And I like to share that because it's important for people to understand that we all don't look the same. Like I said, we're a very diverse community, spread throughout Portland Public Schools. So, we had our camps primarily at the Native American Youth and Family Center. In addition to that, we also supported our Many Nations Academy with an outdoor experience camp where they were able to learn elective credit. Some of the activities they did, learning about traditional knowledge, such as fire making, learning how to make arrows, you know, learning how to shoot a bow and arrow, which, to be honest, getting archery approved through our liability insurance was a real struggle. Unfortunately, I started that about a year and a half, two years ago. But from that, we've been able to certify staff to be certified archery instructors. Feels kind of colonizing, to be honest, but it's still, we're able to do it, and we're able to be insured doing that. So, our youth were able to make bows, make arrows. Here's some of the pictures there where they're making arrows, learning how to start fire. We also have staff that are trained in traditional Indigenous games. Some of these are games that you may know, like lacrosse. Some of them you may have learned if you attended the Leadership Institute, a game called Rock and Fist that we play. I saw many of the principals in your schools playing these games, which is a great bonding experience for all of them. We also play games like double ball and shinny stick, which are some of the games more typical to this area. And so, we've got community members that have been doing these games for years, you know, generations. And now, we're able to teach people about them again. One of the other really amazing resources that we were able to use the RESJ funding for is to promote our gardens behind NEA. We have a lot of area there, and probably a third of it now, we've been able to plant, provide hundreds of pounds of food that end up going in those food boxes that we send home with family. But on top of that, city kids are learning how to farm, learning how to garden, learning traditional plant medicines, things like nettle tea, which has tons of calcium in it. It's good for your joints when you get old, like me. You know, different foods that they may not have experienced, but seeing how they grow and how that they can do that themselves has been an incredible experience for all of them and everybody involved. Some of the other things that we did, storytelling. And then, they took that into a more modern sense by having the youth make zines from the stories that they're telling. Like I said, we did first food demonstrations with our Health Equity Team, traditional medicine gardens, campus visits for our ninth-grade counts youth. Then, like I said, included going to Southern Oregon University for some of them for a week. Some of these youths have been away from home before, and it was a great experience for them, to be able to stay in college dorms and kind of get that experience of staying up late and enjoying themselves in a safe and supportive manner. Yeah. So, I really appreciate the support that we've had with the RESJ partnership, not only during the summer, but during the winter. only during the summer but during the school year, the wraparound services that we were able to provide, culturally specific family engagement programming and leadership and positive culturally identity. It's so important to our communities. We know that when people have a good, a positive self-image and feel good about who they are as a person, that they're going to succeed and have the tools that they need to help succeed in a world that oftentimes looks down on us. So, thank you.
Thank you, partners.
If we go back one slide, can we see those pictures from B? Are those your pictures?
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to take a chance to have them up there.
Oh, thank you.
I think we have another slide of pictures too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Those are great. And is there one more slide of NIA pictures too?
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And just to close out, just like we have so many fabulous partners, we also have a really small but mighty team of RESJ staff, and so I just want to thank Menroth NIA, who manages our SUN program, Terilyn Wiley, who manages our RESJ partners, and then the fabulous team of Lydia Lopez Gamboa, who could run a small country, Amy Lou, who has worked with all of our partners to really provide a lot of capacity building in terms of billing and invoicing, and Pam Dahlberg, who's gotten everyone signed up. So, it was really a great team effort.
So, Danny beat me to the punch here, because I wanted to end by also appreciating for each of these departments that collaborated to bring this comprehensive amount of historic summer programming available for our students. It was, we were glad for the resources, and we're glad that we pumped them all into direct services for our students, but it took a small army of staff to really pull it off, get it organized, recruit the instructors, the partners, and everyone else. So, my hat's off to everybody who played a role.
So, that's amazing. Thank you so much for the information of the presentation. Thank you for bringing some of our partners to the table to talk about your work. It's just really exciting to hear firsthand. I think at this point, unless there's any more superintendent, we'll open it up to the board for questions or comments or thoughts.
I was just going to provide a comment. Having been around PPS for 25 years, this is the first summer I've seen a really systemic approach. And I love everything that just got shared that's about engaging kids' passion, but I really want to focus in on the academic acceleration because that has not been available. And the fact that we have curriculum that's aligned, that we have teachers, that we have PD, that it's four weeks, I mean, it is just like a totally different thing that PPS has ever offered. So, I really want to give a shout out to the team, and I appreciate that I had a chance to go see it with the experts who could tell me exactly what was happening in the classroom this summer. But I really want to acknowledge that because if you looked for it, which when I had a student who was struggling, you couldn't find it. You couldn't find it in PPS or in our community partners. So, what a gift to our students. So, I just want to thank the team that created it and executed that this summer, because I'm sure it's going to make a huge difference for our students this year.
If I could just underline that, as we shared with all of our elected leaders from the region, if they need testimony about the work that can be accomplished on behalf of students, when you have resources available to provide this kind of programming, I call it the fifth quarter, we hope that this becomes a perpetual resource that we can make available every year. So, your support and advocating for that will be important.
And I really appreciate the fact that we're tracking that with NWEA and AIR and the Calder Center, that we will have concrete ability to show the benefits of these programs and be able to share those, so we can get more funding for these really key initiatives. So, thank you for that piece of that work as well.
I'd like to add one quick comment on, talk about what the superintendent was talking about is looking at the budget piece for next year, how are we looking for budget-wise to be able to continue this stuff next year as well?
Well, as you know, that's the multimillion dollar question, Director Holland. So, this was a one-time windfall. We directed it to Student Services, so we have a little bit on reserve to do some level of programming for the coming summer, but it sure would be nice to do a little more, particularly for those students who we really know need the support.
So, I guess I'm going to ask my fellow colleagues on, who do we need to target and talk to to make sure that we can provide this on a regular basis? And for, you know, whoever is out there who makes those decisions at the state level or what have you, to, you know, look at, you know, when we are intentional about making a difference, you know, things can happen.
I have a thought on that.
I was talking about...
Were you asking for a thought or I? Because I've got one.
I was talking about, I need to talk to you.
Yeah, for, I think the academic piece, clearly the legislature, I do think the piece that is the non-academic piece, the sort of fifth quarter activities, it doesn't really have a school boundary, a school district boundary aspect to it, and that I think a much, potentially more powerful, instead of like just districts doing it on their own, is a more like regional approach in partnership with either the city or the county, or so that it's broader, because again, kids move around all over the summer, and they, I think we'd be much stronger together versus PPS just pursuing sort of the non-academic enrichment piece by itself.
I could just quibble. I hear what you're saying. I would say that the, if you talked to our partners and if you looked at research, the enrichment piece plays a critical academic role. It's not that it's not academic, it's that it complements academics. And I'm happy to share all the research with you around that.
Yeah, I think what I meant is where the funding would come from, because I think it's, I think it'd be harder sell with the legislature to sell on that piece, whereas I think we could in partnership with other districts, which does, could speak to the connections you're describing, Danny, but again, I think there's a bigger play, and there's a lot of other districts that probably don't have the ability to do what we did, and the power of working together seems like it'd be stronger.
So, I hear what you're saying. And so, I'm putting a call out to all the governor candidates that's out there to help us answer this question. So, as they're in the process of running for reelection come November, hopefully that whoever sees this can get these questions and ask these questions when we are talking with our governor, the candidates for governor this year.
You know, my thought as I was watching and listening to the presentation was, how do we, how do we package this up into something that is easily, you know, talking points, right, that we can be using, that our community partners can be using, that folks testify that the legislature can be using, folks talking to other governments, you know, because, you know, maybe some of it, I agree, it might be a hard sell at the legislature for some of this, but maybe that's because they need some education, right? And maybe what we need to be bringing is our successes down there, so they can see these connections with academics. I think this is a great topic. I think Director Constan has had to drop off, but it's a great topic for the Intergovernmental Committee to really think about, who are all the partners we need to be reaching out to, what are all the plays we need to be making in order to making these funding requests and really putting them out there? Because again, these windfalls, you're right, they were one-time, but we've done such a good job with that money, and we've got some results to show for it. And so, how do we parlay that into the argument that it was one-time, that's great, and now how do we make it ongoing, right? How do we get those investments in where they need to be?
I think that's right, Chair Scott. And we shared an early version of sort of the scale of what we were able to accomplish. But just to zoom out also, why it's so important, and I'm glad our elected school board members can say some things that maybe I can't, but you heard, for example, what we were able to do for our students with disabilities. Not only did they get their recovery services, their extended school year, they participated also in the middle of that in our other enrichment and academic program. So, they really got sort of in some cases, a double, triple dose. Now, imagine if we were funded IDEA at a level that permitted us to do this every single summer, a fifth quarter for students with IEPs. Imagine what we could do and what that would mean for our students. The federal government has never fully funded IDEA, so I'm just suggesting.
Yeah. Thank you very much for the presentation tonight. It was really, it was great. Okay, moving on, I think just our last item tonight, and I will say it's eight o'clock, but we did start about 15 to 20 minutes late, so I'm confident we're going to finish in the two-hour timeframe we had. Next, we're going to be voting on the initial members for the Racial Equity and Social Justice Community Advisory Committee Charter members. Superintendent Guerrero, I will turn it back to you.
Yes, not so fast, Ms. Ledesma. So, if you recall, board, recently we spoke about SB 732, which requires districts to establish a community advisory committee or an educational equity committee. We're framing it in our own vernacular here, so we talked to you about a phased approach to really fill that out with a cross-section of people representing the school district, including students, community members, educators. And so, we agreed to come back to you with initial applicants willing to serve. And I know you've seen those materials or applications, and Ms. Ledesma is here to tell you a little bit more about it, and this is just the first set of names, hopefully. And we're going to enter this more broad campaign now that schools started up to recruit a set of additional.
Permission to share. Good evening, Chair Scott. I'm Esther Holland, Directors and Director and... Can you hear? Oh, gosh. Okay. Good evening. I just want to, I get the really distinct honor and pleasure to be able to introduce you to the superintendent's proposed three initial members of our RESJ Community Advisory Committee. As you'll recall, at PPS, we like to both meet the spirit of the law as well as the letter of the law. So, as we, as you all passed our charter just weeks ago, we agreed that we would try to meet the letter of the law by getting three of our RESJ member slots filled prior to September 15th, so that we could meet that deadline. The thinking behind having our RESJ partners have not as big, not as part of the more robust sort of outreach that we need to do to blanket the rest of the members, is because of the deep relationships we have with our RESJ partners. We've been convening them pretty regularly, we talk with them all the time, we see them here. And so, once the charter was drafted, we engaged with our RESJ partners, the superintendent talked to them about it, I talked to them about it, and we got three really strong applications. And I still can't, I still can't share the thing, so... Oh, sorry, I didn't refresh. Okay. So, I want to tell you about the three, and I want you to see their pictures because they're lovely. But, so we have three RESJ partners. So, these are part of the now 26 different RESJ partners that we contract with to provide one of five investment strategies. And so, I'm really excited to introduce you first to Adrielle Pearson. Adrielle is a, she's kind of like a, she's a triple threat in that she is a, oh, this is embarrassing, you can see all of my tabs are open.
It's happened to all of us. Is your lunch runner up there anywhere?
I just saw the text on my wall. Okay, so our first person is Adrielle Pearson. I don't think I did. I'm so sorry. Okay, so... I'm on mute. Why don't I just turn these off? Adrielle? Okay, can you hear me now? So, I'm glad that you're able to see this picture of Adrielle, because Adrielle is a triple threat. Not only did she attend PPS, she works at an organization called POIC. She's the Director of Youth Services. She manages our contracts with POIC that, where they provide wraparound services for students who are attending Rosemary Anderson, as well as provides a really awesome youth mentoring program where the high school students and their programs mentor our middle school students and provide just amazing programming. Adrielle, so she manages all of that. She also is a parent of a student, and she volunteered to be part of the Southeast Guiding Coalition. And Adrielle, when we let partners know about the opportunity for this committee, she talked to me and took me aside, that she said that she was really, really wanting to serve on this committee. And I said, "Oh, after the SCGC, that was a lot of time." And she talked about really loving the experience of being able to talk not only with folks, like with our board members and with administrators, but also with principals, and how that's, how she can really see the partnership and the relationships deepen, and how that is making a difference for not only POIC students but for PPS students. She's lovely to work with, she's a really passionate leader, and very well respected in our community.
I just want to add, she's a Vincent High School graduate as well.
Oh!
Yes, yes.
Are we going there? Yeah, she, and she's deeply committed to our community. I'm really excited about our next candidate. His name is Kolini Futsui. He is the Pacific Islander Community Coordinator from ERCO. And for those of you who know Kolini, that means that he does everything. He has been a really, just a really powerful RESJ partner for so many ways. He has, he's very active in our communities, in our committees for RESJ, providing, not only does he provide direct services, he provides all of the project management and is, like, he just is something that's everyone, he's really passionate about his community and wanting to make sure that we understand the needs and concerns of not just the Tongan community but of Pacific Islanders. And I think this is a really, given some of our data and some of, especially around like discipline, I think it's really important to have this type of representation from Kolini. He's also, ERCO's been a longtime partner with us. They serve many different cultural communities. They're one of our multiracial partners and one of our larger partners. They provide community, culturally specific family engagement, wraparound services, mentoring, and advocacy, as well as positive cultural identity development. And so, they really are active in a lot of our schools. The next partner is Ernie Guerrero, no relation to the superintendent. He is the Director of Step Up, and Step Up is a product of Open School. Ernie Guerrero is a really well-respected leader in Portland. He has served, all of his time serving PPS schools, very passionate about Step Up, but also really passionate about the collaboration with other RESJ partners. Step Up and Open School is one of our larger contracts, and he's worked with Open School for, he knows all the things. He's been through all the different principles and has really, I think, sort of wise and sort of great perspective that I think will bring, because he's seen, he's been working with the district and has seen lots of changes, and remains very optimistic about the change that we can make. I don't know if you recall during the, during the early stages of the pandemic, one of the things that we worked with is we were trying to get high school principals and our partner data together to sort of see like who was attending, who wasn't attending. And Ernie told me once, he was like, "That was, that was my favorite thing to do," was just to really sort of be able to sort of like share data and to sort of like collaborate on that level. was just to really sort of be able to sort of like share data and to sort of like collaborate on that level." And so I think he'll be a really strong member in that he knows our system and is really passionate about collaboration. He's also served on our Renaming Committee. So those are the three. And by the charter and by the legislation, the Board is the, approves the, approves, approves or doesn't approve. Should you approve these three members, we will be able to meet the letter of the law. If you'll recall, the legislation requires that this is a public meeting. So once we get the approval, we can post the meetings that folks can know. And we can have our first meeting prior to September 15th, meeting the letter of the law. Well, we'll also be doing some more deeper now that school has started. We can do a really robust round of student engagement and staff and parent engagement to fill out the rest of our 12 members.
Great. Thank you. It's a really exciting first slate. And I was just going to ask, and my understanding is that now, you know, if we, as we, if we approve the slate tonight and then you'll move forward with engagement for the remaining 12 members of the committee. So very exciting. Let's get a motion on the table. We can have a conversation. So do I have a motion?
I just wanted to say that I've worked with all three of those persons and really it's a stellar lineup. Really happy to support all three of them.
Great. So let's get a motion on the table and then we can convers, so do I have a motion? A second to adopt resolutions, 6573?
Second.
So moved and seconded. And now, is there any board discussion?
As I was saying, they're just all amazing people. Ernie Guadetto is also very involved in climate and environmental justice issues. That's how I know him. Kolini, if you called him right now, he'd be here in a half an hour. He's, he'll show up. He's an amazing leader, not just in the Tongan community but in all communes of color. And Adrielle Person is, I met through the Southeast Guiding Coalition. I called her up. I needed, I had five seats available to the United Negro College Fund this summer, like a gala, trying to find teenagers in the middle of the summertime to go to some fancy thing, you know? And she came through with more than five kids, so I had to look for seats for the other three or so.
Great.
Chair Scott, I'm sorry. I did not hear who made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Director Holland's made the motion and Director DePass seconded.
Thank you.
Yes, my apologies.
I just want to thank you, Ms. Ledesma, for this work because this came through the IG Committee and we talked about, you know, how do we do this again to honor the spirit and the letter of the law and to really make sure we have a robust committee? So this sort of two-step process where we work first with our partners and then do that deep, robust. We wanted to do this properly, but we also wanted to be in compliance with state law. So thank you for making this work and these are incredible candidates. And so I so appreciate the work you've done to, to bring these names before us and to start this committee in such a great way.
Student Representative McMahon, any thoughts?
Yeah, thank you. I, I think I'm kind of mirroring all the comments here, but I also really look forward to working with you to find the students to participate in this committee. I think it's going to be a great opportunity that I'm sure many students will be excited to participate in. So thank you for all your hard work.
Great. Ms. Bratchon, any public comment?
No.
Okay. The Board will now vote on Resolution 6573 approving the Racial Equity and Social Justice Community Advisory Committee Charter members. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Student Representative McMahon?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Excellent. Any abstentions? All right, Resolution 6573 is approved by a vote of five to nothing with Student Representative McMahon voting yes. There were no items pulled from the consent agenda. Is there any other business at this time before we adjourn? See none. Their next regular meeting of the Board will be held on September 20th. This meeting is adjourned.